All those work sessions, assembly, the rules committee. Scoring the table, dentifying our social records. We'll start with you, Mr. Peterson.
Pete Peterson, Assembly.
Tim Steele, Assembly.
The Levens.
Forrest Dunbar.
John Leith.
Billy Gray Jackson.
Mr. Trainor.
Phil Falsy, Municipal Attorney.
Robert Harris, State Department.
Chief Tally, Executive Police Department.
Captain Kevin McGoey, Department of Public Affairs.
Chief Obol, Executive Department.
Identify those that are in rows.
Ralph Sanders, Department of Public Affairs.
Carol Pagnoli, Assistant Deputy Counsel.
Ms. Cruz, Treasury.
James Benton, Department of State and Public.
Julie Soffe, Department of State and Public.
Richard Humphrey, Department of Alaska Special Agent, Best Breakfast, Eagle River.
Tom Graff, Department of Justice.
Can we get the other people in the back? What's your name?
Cody Barker.
Your phone? Yeah.
Cody Barker.
Thank you. I'll be scared. We're here to take a look at 2017 Act 12. Basically what this is, it's an ordinance that was passed when we sent the voters to increase the hotel bed tax up to 14 percent, 12 percent. Mr. Harris, do you want to go through this? Basically it's outside the tax cap, so it will bring us some additional money in. I think it looks like about $4.2 million.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Trainor. So, and I'll just note, Dan Moore will be here. I think he had another meeting, and as soon as he gets here, gets any questions related to Treasury, he'd be able to help with that. So presently, the municipality of Anchorage has a 12 percent bed tax, which as the note indicates, puts us in roughly the bottom third in terms of major cities in the U.S. with respect to how much we charge for bed tax. A portion of that is used to help pay for tourism promotion, and the action here is to move that bed tax from 12 to 14 percent. That would be split amongst three-quarters of that would go, 75 percent of that increase would go towards public safety, the other 25 percent would be to help increase the efforts of the tourism group to attract tourism for the municipality. And I think that's kind of a quick overview.
Mr. Falsy, anything, sir?
I think that covers the mechanics of the ordinance well by way of organization and just of history. The prior communication, the great figure, Maria Burrow, had a 5 percent bed tax. In 1979, the voters approved, upping that to 8 percent, and in that moment dedicated 4 percent to the tourism industry, promotion of tourism industry. And then you back to voters 2005, moved it from 8 to 12 with the delta going towards the Eden Center and the construction and operation of the Nine Center. So that's how we get to where we are today. This is what Mr. Harris said, just add another increment, which is split along those lines. Part of the reason for dedicating additional portions of the promotion of tourism is in recognition of the fact that the effort used to be largely, not largely, but at least significant spearheaded at the state level, but there are appropriations towards promotion of tourism to Alaska that traded the state's budgetary crisis, I mean, from $16 million years ago to just over $1.5 last year.
Thank you, sir. A question, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, I have two questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair, one from Mr. Harris and one from Mr. Falsy. Mr. Harris, in your statement that the current percentage of our bed tax places us sort of in the bottom third, I think you said, is that based on just the number of the percentage? Because not all percentages are created equal. Or is it by, because if our rooms are more costly than other places, the amount of the tax will be greater, the same percentage? What's the measurement there?
It's based on percentage. So, and I'm referring to a study that was done by HBS back in September. HBS is a consulting firm that looks at logic tax reports, in this case, and I'd be happy to send this around. But they went ahead and looked at 150 cities, and of that, we were ranked 115, sort of a tie, in a little way tie with a number of other cities in terms of what we...
Pardon me, sir? I think we tied with 11 cities in the 115.
Yes, at 115, we tied with 11 cities.
Question, just, yeah, if I can make follow-up, just so I'm clear, is that just measuring what their... Is that just measuring what the actual percentage of the sales tax is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, you know, if you're... An 8 percent sales tax in Cleveland is going to be on a $100 room, or an 8 percent sales tax in Anchorage is going to be on a $300 room?
Still 8 percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that we're on the same page on that. And then my question for Mr. Falsy, which I may have forgotten already.
That's not a question.
I did. What did you say?
That was related to the history of the dedication of the tax, and how it got to 12 percent.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned the reason for including it, some part of it, for the tourist industry. Was that prompted, did the tourist industry come to us and ask for that, or what was the genesis of that?
I don't know that I can actually speak to that question. I... Came to me in that form, and so I don't know what the prior mockations have before came to me in that form. I will say that part of the logic of that dedication has always been, not just that it is an worthy endeavor to promote tourism to Anchorage, but that the notion is that that dedication should actually help drive the total volume of the bed tax up. And here, where some of the legs of the statewide programs have been cut out, we need that maybe this additional support that's here to help keep it coming to Anchorage at the level that we expect. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moore, you want to join me, Mr. Evans?
Sure. Appreciate you being here. Okay.
Well, I heard on the 150 most populous cities, one clarification, just to add to that, is that's just the room tax rate itself. There's a lot of places that charge sales tax on top of the room tax, so it's even more expensive in most places to stay at hotels. And the other thing is, we have seen, when we analyze revenues, that the price-saving competition has gone up a lot, and there's been a doubling of the middle market over the last 20 years. And so that's had a pretty profound effect on sort of the average room price across the city. And I think in total, we have, I think, 8,700 rooms that are available for rent currently. And so, anyway, just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Another question, Mr. Evans. Mr. Willington, sir?
Are the... Is the bed tax now above the tax cap?
Mr. Chair, believe the answer is yes. So, there are three components to the bed tax now, 4 percent, 4 percent, 4 percent. My understanding is that they are all outside of the tax cap, and the reason for that is because it was an order approved tax before the tax cap was initiated, and that the subsequent pieces were both specially dedicated and are now special taxes for terms of the tax cap
Mr. Willington, anything else?
We did something on Airbnb six, seven months ago. We left them.
We are, and it's come in close to where our estimate was. It's about $225,000 what we expect to come in 2017 from Airbnb.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering about the dedicated funds. Is this something that we do regularly?
We can dedicate a fund stream. I'm not the state that can. There's going to can dedicate a fund regularly. And that's the reason, personally uncomfortable, because we can dedicate the money. That way the public knows where the money goes, we can account for it.
I just don't remember us doing that.
We did it when we did the Denine Center.
Oh, is that right?
You weren't on the body then.
Okay.
I think I was. So...
I'm sure you were.
Thank you. I was. Mr. Evans, sir?
Yeah, on that question, I just, so I understand, we're saying, so the percentage of this that goes to public safety, and that the people will know where it goes. How do we know, I mean, when we set the 20 budget, we set a certain amount for police department, fire department, all those various departments. How do we know exactly, I mean, we're just saying this certain percent of this money, whatever this amounts to, this extra 2 percent or whatever, will go into those specific budgets?
I don't know when it will go into the police department budget, for example, when it will go to tourism, because the state's been cutting back drastically on tourism.
And it's specifically in the police department budget, or is public safety?
Well, it's public safety. It's both fire and police. Take a look at our tourists that come into Anchorage, and the problem we've had with spies down there, we've got terrorism coming from outside, and there's people laying on the sidewalk, we've got the police department trying to clean up, shootings going on downtown. We need to have a special fund stream to take care of this component. And Mr. Harris, I think, can account for where this money goes once we start dedicating this money coming in, to make sure it's being used for that purpose.
Do the chair... Yes, I'm Mr. Chairman. Yes, as a matter of fact, it would. We would, basically, we track all the money right now, so we're able to give you a fairly detailed breakdown of how much money is coming in, how long we receive it, and then we basically track it that way.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, and what I'm concerned about, or what I don't fully understand, is that say we have a police, say it all goes to the police department budget, we have a police department budget that this year was, say, $100 million, I don't know exactly what it was. And in the next year, it's going to be somewhere around $100 million. If we put all of this money from this dedicated tax into that budget for police department, and keep the budget at $100 million, because there's other monies going in there, we use that money somewhere else. You know what I mean? Does that make sense? There's nothing that says that if we dedicate this, say it raises $10 million, most using easy numbers, we put that $10 million into the bed tax into the police department budget, doesn't necessarily mean our budget goes up to $110 million, because we set the budget every year. We can make it, you know, it may have been $110 million anyway. So if it turns out to be $105 million, really, the money we're saving, because this money went into the police department's budget, is being spent somewhere else. Isn't that true? If that makes sense.
Mr. Falsy?
I think the answer to that is yes. So this would give the Assembly the ability to increase by the dedicated portion up to the 10 million, but it's always been the Assembly's prerogative to say, well, if we have this much gravy, we don't need as much mashed potatoes, so we can reduce the $100 million to whatever you like. As to Mr. Peterson's earlier question, the dedicated fund, the dedication of funds had happened in the past in the municipality, I believe it's only happened two times, and both with bed tax. So the original was the dedication to the promotion of tourism, the second was the dedication to fund and construct the Denine Center and operate the Eden Center. I think as a matter of accounting, it probably would be divvied up in the typical annual municipal budget, how much of this would go to fire, or police, or even to health and services. The important additional component of that, though, would be that it would allow those functions to operate on an area-to-year basis, so you could potentially assign some amount of money, put it into the police department's fund, but it would be taxes raised not from the service area, but from the municipality at large, and allow it to step over its traditional number.
Mr. Willington?
I just... You said how much money you expected this to raise, I forgot.
4.27 million. Mr. Peterson?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Dunbar?
I asked just a kind of a random question that Mr. Starr asked a while ago, but I just, since we're here and we're on the topic. So we dedicated to the Denine Center, 4 percent, you know, that we're talking $8, $9 million a year. At what point is the Denine Center going to be paid off, and what happens at that point? Does that 4 percent go away, or does it get re-dedicated to something else?
So, Mr. Chair, we just refinanced the bonds to the Denine Center. Off the top of my head, maybe two weeks.
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years?
Yes, well, it was refinanced in 2015 for 23 years.
So those, that 4 percent is pledged to the debt service of those bonds. Those bonds do go away, 23 years, and then the charter has portatory language now that says, "When bonds are paid off, the Assembly shall consider what to do with this 4 percent." And you can do everything up from repealing it altogether, or just making it a dedicated 4 percent. Mr. Trainor will be the only one...
Yeah, as soon as I... We'll not be on the line. Good luck, Mr. Trainor. He'll be on the line. I'll be pushing daisies by that.
Mr. Steele?
Yeah, I think that kind of answers the question. My concern was budget tracking. You know, if you just say a certain percentage goes in there, and we don't say it offsets something, or then we're not managing our resources very well, which seems... It just, I'm not sure how the police department or anybody else will do effective budgeting, and they just hope and wish every day that they get some funds.
Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Trainor. But no, it's just, it'd be another revenue source. Like, if you look at the budget book and the revenues, you know, the police department, they have different funds, 101 and 1, whatever it is, 141, whatever that is. And some of their revenue sources right now, it's these combines, and that tax would be an additional revenue source to the police department. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
We don't want to waste a diversified, an income-straight company, and they're setting this, and not really the first time. Because far too often, I want to say, we don't know how they do this. And there's a couple of other things I've asked, been asked by people. Well, we have the sales tax, we shouldn't have this, but we're not going to have a sales tax on this municipality discussion. We're talking about having a special election coming up. If you predicted the vote, you were saying having a special election or something. There's nothing in stone that will be in this April election, so... Other questions from Assembly members? Comments? Anything?
I have a question, but it's not on stage.
Mr. Willington? Have you been joining Mr. Croft?
Could we ask questions of people until they come in?
Let me see if I can just answer, but do you have a question, sir?
I was going to ask Julie, always funny to spend your additional revenue on promotions or...
We've got time now. Let's just open the public comments. Three minutes, if you would, please. Identify yourself for them to speak to.
Just like, everybody's looking at me first.
She can't identify who you are.
Okay, just from here. Good afternoon, Julie Soffe with Visit Anchorage. Thank you for the opportunity. Visit Anchorage's board met yesterday and unanimously opposes the proposed room tax charter. And as I share our reasons and comments from our membership, I would like to start first with some context. Our hoteliers do have a history of stepping forward and proposing and supporting tax proposals for needs that benefit not just the visitor industry, but the community at large. It was our early tourism businesses that initiated the room tax tourism marketing with 50-50 split to the general fund, began nearly 40 years ago, to the benefit of the entire community. Annually, $8 to $9 million remains in the general fund for community benefit. Eleven years ago, the Visit Anchorage, with the support of hotels, proposed the increase to the bed tax to construct the new convention center. We felt it would allow us to better attract and serve conventions, and we very much believe that the community at large has benefited from this effort as well, and this is paid entirely from bed taxes. However, the industry opposes targeted taxes that do not return a proportionate benefit to visitors. Though we appreciate the 0.5 percent of the proposed increase was intended for tourism promotion, the bulk of collection would unfairly burden outside visitors to solve an issue that they do not cause. Please know that we did have a thorough and lively and very long discussion within our board. We tried to recognize the needs of the community and also engaged all sectors of our membership in conversations over the past week. I am confident that the board's position thus reflects the sentiment of the vast majority of our diverse membership. Regardless of Visit Anchorage's position, individual hotels, motels, and inns would oppose this amendment on their own. I'd like to outline some of the primary concerns raised over this past week. First, this is a very targeted tax to pay for public safety. All industries of Anchorage, and indeed all residents and commuters, are the beneficiaries of strong public safety. While the tourism industry is proud to contribute room tax, car rental tax, property tax, and other revenue to the city, we feel it is unreasonable and unsustainable that one sector alone carries this increased burden. The question that we kept coming back to is, why should the tourism industry be targeted to assume the responsibility of funding public safety? While a safe city is vital for marketing, visitors should not shoulder a disproportionate cost, as visitors are not causing the problems. This change also could unintentionally reduce Anchorage's competitiveness for group travel and meetings among other destinations. Anchorage taxes currently are not unreasonable by national standards. However, we could become less competitive among other Alaska cities. It puts businesses charged with collecting the tax at risk as they compete with Alaska destinations. This proposal also complicates ongoing discussions about funding a statewide marketing program. So while we do not support this proposal, I am appreciative of our longstanding partnership between the municipality and Visit Anchorage that has been built on shared goals and shared success in raising city revenues, providing Anchorage jobs, and diversifying the economy. Continued growth in visitation will continue revenue growth in bed taxes, property taxes, and car rental taxes, and we look forward to a continued partnership.
Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to comment on some questions, but, because everybody knows we have an issue with public safety downtown, and when visitors come to Anchorage, I mean, I can't prove this, but I think that they're there now, they're not in Midtown where I live. And so, you know, I think that this is a really good idea in terms of providing more public safety in the downtown area, which is critical right now. And so, and I talked a little bit earlier about how this revenue, how this additional revenue would work in terms of a budget, and maybe some of the money will go as a line item to police, some of it will go as a line item to fire, but I guess my question is, to both police and fire, what impact do you think this would have on tourism, and how would you use this money?
So, the best answer, I can probably deal with, are two questions. What the tourism impact is currently on the public safety needs, what does it mean to have that influx of people in our city, and how do we respond? As well as with additional funds, what issues would be, will we be able to address? Presently, during the summer tourism months, our SROs are assigned to foot and bike patrols. Consequently, this takes them out of the schools, and the schools don't cease just because of summertime. The other problem with it, they're away from dealing with the juveniles and our youth, which is a real concern in all areas of crime. Proper staffing would allow the department to provide services to each of these important areas. Anchorage serves as a hub for state throughout the year, and during all months, there are tourists that come into town for conventions and other special events. The MOA often provides additional police services, which are typically paid by overtime of officers and so on. So if we were properly staffed and all, we'd get more efficient use of funds and, if not reimbursement, towards the overtime. These same principles apply to visitors coming to Anchorage from other regions of Alaska, variety of social services, military, and public and private industry-type events and services. Based on the first study, we know adequate staffing allows officers to spend time out of their vehicles, which ultimately will reduce crimes and make the downtown area and all tourist area more pleasant area. The other thing we have to be mindful of is use of our highways. And tourists use our highways, traveling back and forth and so on, and providing safety on those roadways is very, very important.
Thank you. Any comments from Assembly members?
A couple. Right now, the fire department, from a community risk reduction perspective, which benefits anybody, both local residents, those who are transient through Anchorage, and those that come and visit. Our community risk reduction and public education efforts have basically waned, waxed to nearly zero with our budget issues. So if any additional funds came into the Anchorage Fire Department, they would be pretty much dedicated to community risk reduction and public information. For example, we don't have a public information officer in the fire department, so we rotate those public information responsibilities through the command staff. So this particular week, I am the AFB PIO, and we're missing a tremendous amount of opportunity in education at school level, at the community council level, and just in the general education of the public. So we have a lot of need, wildfire risk reduction. The grants with the fire wise are basically gone. We would view that as an opportunity for these funds. Smoke detectors, CO detectors, we partner with the Red Cross, but our funding is limited in how we can purchase these and take time to install them in homes. Child seat inspections that we continue to do, the training of the technicians. Right now, we're using all of our probationary firefighters to do that. The other one I just mentioned would be, because it would affect the tourism area, is front country rescue and swift water and dive rescue. Those are special operations that the fire department takes on. As you know, we have no Coast Guard, so whenever a tourist gets in trouble along the waterways, the Anchorage Fire Department responds. We own the boats. We have no special funding for those boats. Trails out in King Cave, when we respond, we have to respond with four-wheel Bobcat-type machines, because the big medic units apparatus can't operate on those trails. That money comes out of the fire budget. So we would use whatever funds that we could get for the community risk reduction, special operations, and public education, which right now, we're not doing a very good job.
Thank you. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions from Assembly members? More public comments? We've got time. Yes, Mr. Gray.
Mr. Trainor, I traveled, since I retired now, about 50 days a year. So I see the hotel taxes and the sales tax on top of that in other cities, so 14 or 16 percent is not believable, but I want to know what we're getting for, and what the taxpayers of Anchorage are authorizing by passing this. Right now, it just looks like we're creating a slush fund. And I would expect that if this were passed, the police department's budget should stay the same, and then they would get the additional percentage that would be specifically geared towards tourism. And Mr. Gray Jackson said that tourism happens in downtown, but there's probably as many beds in Midtown, and there's a lot of beds in Spinaire, in addition to downtown. And the other part of the money going just to Visit Anchorage, there's other areas that affect tourism that needs attention. One thing is public restrooms. In the Midtown and downtown area, there are none. Whereas other cities, and there are public restrooms strategically, I mean, tourism-type cities. You go to, well, Ghat, or just Burnham, but there's other cities throughout the country that have very good restaurants, or restrooms for tourists. And if you go to, say, Whitehorse, look there, Tourism Visitors Bureau, it's just 10 times what we have here in Anchorage for a town that's much, much smaller. So if you want to offer this to voters, I think you should go back and revisit the whole thing, and designate exactly what the money is going to go to, and what it's going to accomplish, and add language to make sure that it isn't just a slush fund that becomes lost in the greater budget, so that the police department still doesn't end up with the same budget they have today. Only $3 million is coming from the bed tax, which means that you actually backfill the rest of the budget by $3 million. So if we went to 14 percent or 16 percent, and some cities are even up to 20 percent, but when you ask them in specific cities what it's for, at the hotels, they generally know people are not stupid. They really know what they're paying for and what it's doing, and we should be able to point to this and say, this is exactly what we're going to do with the money, and if you don't know what we're going to do with the money, why would you pass this?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I've been operating my bed and bath since '91 in Eagle River, and we started off with zero bed tax or room tax, and now it's 12 percent, and now we are faced with two additional percent. And I did a little math from the room tax income to the city general fund. I tallied it up, it was, I believe, with three-quarters, it was $21,405. And if you add another quarter, you would reset by another $3 million, so it would be, say, $25 million room tax for the year. That's quite a sum that the city benefits from the tourism coming into Anchorage. I think I support Mrs. Soffe's position. She's 100 percent right. I believe we have a downturn in tourism. So if we have a downturn in tourism in 2016, I don't see how we can motivate the public to come and visit Anchorage if we increase the room tax by 2 percent, since the traveling public is already pretty careful how they spend their money. So if they still come into Anchorage, then they might stay that one day less in Anchorage, and then all... and then all the math would come back to what it was before you increased it by 2%. Because the increase of 2% comes to $3,567, and I rounded it up a little bit to $3,600. So, if you do the math, the city would benefit from the total one quarter, no, three quarters or two-thirds. So, overall, just if you do the math, it just takes a very little change in tourism coming into Anchorage, spending the nights in Anchorage, to totally offset the picture and brings it right back to where it was before. So, any night reduced by the tourists, and most of them actually only stay the night when they come into Anchorage, and then they go out, and then when they come back from visiting Alaska, they stay one more night before they leave. So, if there's any incentive, and my website says Anchorage is worth staying at least three nights, well, if you increase, for example, based on a $100 room rate, you increase it to 14%, I mean, $14, I'm sorry, 14%, $14, that means that person might go and stay the night, the extra night in Matsu or Denali or Kenai, because they have hardly any room tax. There's hardly any room tax. So, our incentive for the visitors to stay more than just one night would become even more difficult to support if the rates, plus everything is expensive here to begin with, you know? So, room rate increase, I am very opposed to it, based on that it wouldn't benefit the city all that much, and the city was able to pay for their bills before the increase. So, if they know how to budget, like everybody else has to budget, I'm sure they either find that same money in the same pot, because it's not going to be less from last year. But I don't think, like Mrs. Sob said, the tourism industry should support the municipality, and the municipality just as a token to justify that money that goes into their coffers, that says, okay, we'll spend it on this, this, and this, or this. Obviously, the money that comes into the visit Anchorage would be used for tourism promotion, and that is used properly. So, if it were to reverse, if the city only would get one-third or one-quarter, and tourism advertisement would get the three-quarter or the two-thirds, I would support that, but not the other way around. Makes no sense. So, I would, thank you for that vision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Mr. DeGrasse for reminding me of several problems around Anchorage. Mr. Moore, what's the estimated amount of revenue that would be generated if this is passed?
It's obviously, it's about $4 million annually. And so, it would be about $1 million more for visit Anchorage and $3 million more for public safety. One comment I just heard there on the budget for 2016 versus 2017, the comment was made that it would be the same, possibly in the room. Actually, we are working on the first quarter budget revision, just so you know, because the budget number is what really, really matters. We're proposing, we're going to have to propose a $1 million decrease in the room tax budget. The budget has gotten ahead of reality. So, just so you know that that's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Just to end this up, yes, sir?
So, I think the police department, we obviously recognize the importance of tourism in Anchorage, and the large concentration of our tourists being in the downtown center of Anchorage. And with that, we devote to devote a large number of resources to help ensure that downtown is a safe environment for those tourists. For instance, here recently, we dedicated a daily foot patrol specifically to downtown. During our summer months, we take all of our school resource officers, 15 of them, and we deploy them downtown to assist in making Anchorage a great city for visitors. We do that, and when that takes place, we're pulling these officers from other places. We don't have a dedicated, you know, downtown force of that size, 15 officers, now we added two additional officers. So, those officers come from other areas, and when we pull, look, sometimes we can't backfill the tactical position, or a Midtown patrol officer. So, if there were additional resources coming to the department, we could devote those resources to staffing downtown without taking away from other areas, and thus, the whole city of Anchorage would benefit.
Mr. Steele, sir?
Yeah, I would like to get a session. We were able to sustain the walking patrols, and we are going to have increased public safety expenditures because of the state withdrawing law enforcement fire protection to a certain extent down along the highway and coming in and out of Anchorage. It just, the state's budget situation is definitely impacting Anchorage, and we do need to maintain the levels of safety and security that we've gotten provided to our tourists and to our citizens. So, stand by, you're going to see budgets going in because of those increased services and everything.
Anybody else wish to testify? Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
I'll get over here and then, sorry.
Hi, I'm Carol Fraser, and I'm the sales director for the Aspen Hotel in Anchorage. Out of the 8,700 hotel rooms in town, I have just over 200, so I'm a very small voice. But I've been in the tourism industry in Alaska for 20 years. I serve on statewide boards, and so what I want to bring to you in the next couple minutes is a statewide perspective to Anchorage. Respectfully, although I live in Anchorage, people don't come to Anchorage on their vacation. They come to Alaska on their vacation. And Anchorage is a small piece of Alaska today. And we have 2 million travelers that come to Alaska every year. And we market the state and Anchorage through Alaska Travel Industry Association's marketing plans. And as Mr. Falz said earlier, the State of Alaska has given our industry, Alaska Travel Industry Association, $16 million the last few years. And many, I think all of you received an email from me this week. The state's CO of 16 million has gone down to nine, and now it's at $1.5 million to market the entire state. So, we're very, very worried about the future of tourism. And all of you who own your own businesses, if you don't market, people don't know who you are, and they won't come knocking at your door. So, I appreciate that the municipality is looking at a way to help increase the Anchorage Marketing Fund in light of this reduction that state's funded. The tourism industry across the state contributes over $110 million in taxes and fees to the state. And from that $110 million, you now get $1.5 million to marketing. And with that $1.5 million, the legislature has asked us to come up with our old plan to reduce our reliance on the state's budget, that $1.5 million. It used to be that, with that $16 million that we got from the state, we had a lot of pay-to-play programs, advertising. My company would spend about $15,000 a year advertising in the state's vacation planner. I would go on trade missions with them. I would market, and I'd put ads, quantitative ads in Sunset Magazine, things like that. With $1.5 million, all that's gone now. So, the pay-to-play portion is gone. So, there used to be a match, $16 million was matched $2 million by private citizens, private companies like us, so we have $18 million to market the state. Well, that's gone. So, for FY '17, we no longer have a state vacation planner. The only state in the United States that will not have a vacation planner. And all of you know, your parents, your grandparents come to Alaska, it's hard to book Alaska. We're huge. How do you get from Denali to Seward to Ketchikan? It's really hard, and a vacation planner helps people plan their vacation. So, that's gone. We've closed our five international offices. For the first time in, I think, 40 years, we are no longer at the presence in German speaking Europe, which is the largest international contingent coming to Alaska. So, Alaska Travel Industry Association, with this reduction in budget, now cannot market to 10% to the customers that come to Alaska. We have 2 million customers, we're losing 10%. For easy math, let's say Anchorage loses 10%. So, if we lose 10% of our occupancy next year, and then there's such an increase, as everyone knows, in hotels in Anchorage, and so we're all lowering our rates. I am now, my little tiny hotel in Midtown Anchorage is competing with the Captain Cook on rate today. Not in the summer, but in the winter time, we compete, we all lower our rates. So, if we have less customers, lower occupancy, fighting for the same customer, we're lowering our rates, and respectfully, $4.2 million is not going to be cheap. And finally, the industry together, as the legislature has asked us to, we're giving together on statewide level to find ways to make, to increase this marketing much again. And we're looking at a TID as that you know, which is the Tourism Improvement District, where we'll assess ourselves. It's not a tax, even if you say it's a tax, government could take that away. So, we're looking at assessing ourselves. And you're all familiar with our Downtown Business Improvement District, and I was on that original board a million years ago, and no one knows that's District Managerial Committee. It's a self-assessment to fund, to make downtown, because it's been district paying state tomorrow. We're trying to do that with the tourism industry too. We're just starting this process. We're going down to the legislature next week to work on it. It's not a new concept. We have it here in Anchorage with the Downtown Improvement District. There's over 150 tourism improvement districts in the United States. California, which is a bankrupt state, started this, and now they have $10 million, no, $100 million, $10 million a year that they're collecting in the TID. And I respectfully ask that the municipality, the states of Alaska, the tourism industry, the chance to make this TID happen, because people don't come to Anchorage, they come to the state. And if we increase our bed tax by 2% and then do a TID on top, which might be 1% or 2%, we will become too expensive. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
So, what are the odds of that TID happening? Do you think it will?
Well, I absolutely think it will. This is just my opinion, and I'm not on the Alaska Travel Industry Association Board directly, I got a couple other statewide boards that do support that TID. As I said, when the preliminary stages, it's difficult, because right now, across the state, there's a bed tax that's set, and how to collect that and how to pay it. So, it's easy to say, well, let's just do a TID on hotels. But another question, well, I want to pay the licensing guys, but they're marketing, or the kayak guys, they got to pay their way too. The kayak guys, licensing guys want to, but how do they make that happen? There's a lot of logistics. The will is there, the desire is, from our industry is to replace that $16 million that we used to get from the state. It'll take us a while, and what we're doing, what we're looking at right now is probably putting this in place to collect in 2019, because right now, you know, we're January 2017, and everything we do in the tourism industry is 18 to 21 months out. I mean, I've already spent contracts out for 18 and 2019 for two elevators. So, if we increase the tax for next year, like you're proposing, that's going to have to come out in my pocket, because I've already contracted out so many of the hotels for excellent rates that we're after. I absolutely think this is going to happen. California's been very, very successful, but the city's annual is wildly successful. I think they collect $12 million a year with their own TID as well as the state's TID.
Anything else from the Assemblymember? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I represent the Anchorage, Alaska Bed and Breakfast Association, and I've been in business in, with, for 26 years in Mountain View, and I've been there since 1941. We were hoping that if we decided on going ahead with the 14% bed tax increase, that we, as bed and breakfast, and I represent the 30 bed and breakfasts who are in our association, who are legally permitted and inspected by our own organization, and we were also initiative, in the initiative that started the bed and breakfast guidelines for the city in the beginning. We were hoping that we might put in a stipulation where the bed and breakfasts would be, if you have under eight rooms, leave it at 12%, and then the over eight rooms could be the And most of our Bed and Breakfast Association members have agreed with that.
Anything else?
It would, I suppose, also benefit the Airbnb's, but that's where we ended up losing a lot of our business this last year in our association members. I alone grossed $10,000 less than I had the year before, and the year before that. I agree.
Mr. Steele and Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, my understanding, and my family ran a bed and breakfast way back when, but my understanding is that most tourists that come to Alaska, one way or another, come through Anchorage, whether it be by air, come in, spend the night, and go out on the train, or go out on their ways. But one way or another, that they come through Anchorage. And so, I think the fact that not everybody comes to Anchorage is not necessarily the biggest part of the yard, because most tourists come through one way or another, on the highway or by air, or just to see Anchorage or something. And I don't know, you may have better statistics than I do.
Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And so, you cut the number of rooms off at eight? Is that like the average?
That's how, that's how our permitting is, is either a little lower or a little above, and the price of permitting is that way.
Do you happen to know what the average number of rooms in a bed and breakfast?
Well, our Bed and Breakfast Association, the highest is five. And we have only three in the, and I have four, and most of them are threes and twos.
All right, thank you.
And, you know, as people come into town, we do get them only one or two nights in around the usual.
Any questions, Assemblymember? Anybody else wish to speak to this? Yes, ma'am.
I want to point out again that the municipality benefits, or benefited 2016 by receiving $16 million into your budget from the tourism industry, and I'm sure that you were able, with $16 additional million in the budget, to do the little bit of extra work that the tourism industry prompted on you, cost you to work for, you know, and that covered it generously, and that the rest of that money went who knows where. But if you're asking for another 2%, then I don't think that this is essential to your operating budget to work efficiently or effectively regarding the tourism industry, because you have already done it up to now.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to, somebody has not spoken yet? Anybody else?
I guess I'll say something really quick. I'm Rochelle Egan with the Hotel Captain Cook. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the Hickel family, and especially Wally, who is in the state right now. I have to support everything that Carol said, and I also sit on the Visit Anchorage Board. I really, we, of course, are not supportive of the 2% bed tax increase, but we are 100% supportive of the TID, and we're going to get behind it 100%, and we're going to get with our partners to get behind it 100%. The 2% bed tax, and although we are also extremely vocal about having public safety downtown, because we are downtown, and, but it isn't just about downtown. And Chief Charlie, I appreciate what you had to say about having police officers downtown, and you, sir, I don't know your name, but I was, I live downtown in the summertime. I'm downtown all the time, and I don't know that there was an increase in police officers downtown. If there was, I never saw them. And it's the first time- And, and it's the first time that we've heard absolutely fantastic things about having the foot patrols back. Five years ago, there were foot patrols. Five years ago, there were police officers on bicycles and the whole city could see that and benefit from that. But there is millions of dollars that have been allocated to, from the municipality to the municipality for public safety that no one in the city can seem to say, okay, where did it go to? And the same thing happened with the alcohol tax as well. Millions of dollars to help for rehabilitation for people that are drinking off of an alcohol tax and yet we don't have any place for those people to go to and we don't know. I think there's a little bit of problem with trust and, and until there's some confidence built back up with the citizens of Alaska, I, you know, we are not going to just go ahead and say it's okay to tax our, our guests on a 2% bed tax, okay, to turn around for public safety when, again, if that isn't their responsibility. We're a city, we're a family. You know, we live here. I was born and raised here, okay? And we need to take care of it ourselves, not put it on somebody else. And although I, I said yesterday, I wanted to just address one problem, the, and, and I know we're not here to talk about a sales tax either, but the city needs to wake up, okay? And they need to get in behind the TID and not a bed tax, okay? And you need to go forward, all of you do. You all have to do it. As Assemblymembers, I'm a voter and I think that you have to stand up and you have to say that we need a sales tax to help fund the public safety and to give Chief Tolly and to give our, Mr. LeBlanc, the firemen and the police officers that we need. Yesterday at our meeting, we learned that there's 400 police officers that are graduating from an academy in February. That's, we were told, I'm just telling you, we were told that.
Our staff is 412 for the whole police department.
Okay, your staff is 412.
The whole police department.
How many are, how many are going to graduate soon?
Fifty, roughly, a little over 50 individuals, or some feel, some form of training.
Are they going?
I'm sorry.
Are they going to be put to work?
Eventually. So right now, that 412, about 50 of them are in some field, some area of training, either at the academy, which is, will graduate this May.
Some field training.
And then in field training, which means they'll finish up around May.
So I guess my question really quickly then is, if we don't have the budget to pay for them, but we are graduating them, which is what we want, how are those 50 police officers going to go to work, okay, if we don't currently have the budget to pay for them? And we don't have a 2% bed tax, so we're not going to be able to do without. And the other thing that I want to say is, and I think this is really important, something that Carol said, and that's that it's really sad when we don't have a planner. She's right, people don't come to Alaska to come to Anchorage, okay? They don't. Alaska is on the bucket list of every single American out there and everybody wants to come to Alaska. They want to go fishing, they want to see the mountains, they want to go kayaking. Yes, you are 100% right too, Mr. Steele. They come into Anchorage and they have to come here and they're going to come in by a great Princess or Holland America ship and they're going to get on a bus and go up there or they're going to fly out. But they won't do what we want them to do, which is stay more than one night so that Anchorage can, and all those little mom and pop shops up and down the streets can actually sustain themselves longer. That's what we're trying to do right now, is get them to stay longer. A 2% increase in a bed tax isn't going to help that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just want to make one comment, okay? Because you, you talked about the police that are in the academy and how, in other words, you wonder where the money is to put them to work when you dump the academy. But the thing about it is, when folks are hired and academy starts, the money is there, not just to the academy, but it's also hiring them to perform the service throughout the year. And my question is, I mean, I don't think I want to speak, but please refer to give me a TID, because I totally missed that.
Okay, well, it's a Tourism Improvement District. So basically, and Carol probably knows a little bit more because she sat on, she's been part of the statewide boards, but the way that I have been explained and, and when we sat in the meeting the other week was, what we would do is assess ourselves. So, and it could be 1%, that's what they're talking about right now, but we would assess ourselves and that money will go back into advertising statewide, our tourism industry. Because right now, you know, and this is something I have to say, the tourism industry is what's going on in Alaska. You know, we have great friends and great partners in the oil industry, but they're not supporting us. And we knew that 10 years ago. And the whole entire state kept spending all the money like they were still supporting us. They're not supporting us. And while the tourism industry, and the governor came out and said it, is the greatest thing going for Alaska right now? We got slapped really hard as soon as it was $60 million, $9 million, and $1.9. And it should have been, everybody, all of you and everybody everywhere should have jumped up and down and said, you can't do that. We have to have the money in order to be able to go out there and sell Alaska. Alaska, just that name, doesn't tell the German market exactly what's going on here or anybody else. And China is one of the biggest up and coming places to come to Alaska. They have more money than anybody can think of and we want them to come here and spend it, but we have to advertise to them.
Thank you very much. I get it now, it's like a big idea, but then you appreciate so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We've got to go to final semi-commentary about that. Yes, Mr. Sanderson?
Yeah, my name is Ralph Samuels. I'm a Holland America line princess. We are owners of the West Park Hotel Downtown, but I'll just say, I'm with Carol. I'm a standalone property. I agree with everything that Carol said, as a standalone property. And instead, I'd like to talk to you as a larger entity, you know, the 800-pound gorilla of tourism in Alaska. People think of tourism as this monolith, we're all going to act alike and think alike, and it simply isn't true. We are a global company. And they're, you know, Rochelle's got it, one standalone property, she's got some statewide properties. So when we are selling itineraries and presenting this deal, most of our folks don't stop in Anchorage. The southeast people take us to seven-day cruises, they don't come into the interior at all. Some folks fly into Fairbanks, come straight through and go through a meteor and get in the ship. Some people, you know, we have, we are fortunate, we have one ship that comes here every two weeks directly to Anchorage, you know, stay in a hotel. So there's a lot of moving parts in tourism that are going to be impacted by this. And if you want more information on the TID, I think Julie or Carol and I can give you, as long as we don't bore you to tears. But when we put together an itinerary, we've arranged hundreds of thousands of people up here, we're selling, first of all, we're selling 17 and 18 already. We put together packages with other, not only do we own a hotel, we're probably the largest customer of other hotels in town. And we price that product out and we already pay 4% with nobody else pays for services. We're paying property taxes like every other business, Downtown Anchorage, as well as the Business Improvement District, Downtown Anchorage. On top of that, the guests that stay here are paying the 4% if it's into the general government. But our itineraries are really based, and it comes into south-central Alaska, it's based around Denali. Denali is where the product that we're selling is all geared around. So they'll stop in Talkeetna, there is a Copper Princess just south of the Ronalan Cut-off, there's a Keen Eye Princess that probably all of you have driven by. So when we sell an itinerary, you're packaging all these, these pieces together and this is such a cost to us. People, people have told me it's a pass-through, they'll worry about it, they're going to pass-through. It's our real dollar cost to our itinerary that we're bringing all these folks up on the package tours up there. And it's, we're overwhelmingly the largest volume, not just the cruise industry, but my company overwhelmingly dominant with these itineraries that come up here and it's simply a cost being added on. So we're looking at examining, how are we going to work at the statewide level with the TID, a component of which would be a statewide bed tax. A component of that would be, a component would be a pass-through tax on tour operators. We're deciding, is that going to be beneficial to us? All the other tour operators in here are going to be deciding whether it would be beneficial. We don't know the odds of passing, I think Assemblymember, the odds of passing, I don't know. I tried to call down to Juno after meeting yesterday and I've been trading phone calls to try to see where they're at. But as far as just adding costs onto Anchorage, I think you're going to go the wrong way. You're going to, you're, because the comparison of tax rates, while interesting statistics, is completely irrelevant statistic. People can drive to New York City, I have no idea the bed tax rate to be 30%. I have no idea what it is. I know Seattle, I used to call it the King Rickety Tax because I had to pay for state and I stayed at hotels down there. But the comparison doesn't matter. They don't have a three-and-a-half-hour plane ride just to get here either. It's the total cost of the vacation that you look at. So if you're going to take $4 million out of the pockets of our collective guests, it's $4 million. Best brew house meals and best tour attractions, all of these things are going to come out. Honestly, they're going to shrink tourism in Anchorage. You're going to go the wrong way and then you exacerbate the problem that you have. And the last point I want to make is, once again, from, probably not an issue for Julie or Rochelle or Carol, but the Matsu Borough just had a very similar debate to this. And they voted down a bed tax increase. And I think three years ago, Keen Eye had. And they're, all of those assemblies are feeling the same squeeze from the state that you all are feeling. And I, I sympathize, I really do. They're feeling the same squeeze, but for the largest movement of people in tourism through the state. Ketchikan says it's just $3, and Juno says it's just $2, and it's percentage in Skagway, and the meteor does something, and the meteor does something. They just had the debate and voted it down in the Matsu Borough. Next thing you know, it's $50 a head, it's a million people, and now you're talking about $50 million. And the biggest impact on tourism in Alaska, and Julie can argue with me, argue in front of God and everybody if you want to, a ship being deployed to Alaska, a Princess deployed as a ship to Alaska, it provides 50,000 people over the course of the summer that flow through restaurants, the hotels, bars, the shore excursions, everything else that, that happens. And to do something that would raise the costs on the itinerary, particularly if it adds up, the example that they use in the Matsu was, those people in Anchorage, they got 12% and we've only got 8%. And we kept trying to point out, and I could see the distrust in their eyes when I said it's an irrelevant statistic. The tax rate doesn't really, it's not going to impact, it's the total cost. The total cost of the package is what we're selling as the largest tour operator. I think you, I appreciate the debate, Assemblymember. I really, I understand the problems you guys are in, but I really think you're going to move backwards if this passes. Also, Alaska Hotel and Lodging Association did the same thing that this Anchorage did and they had a unanimous vote, also I got a letter from them, I don't know how to distribute.
Question, Assemblymember, so I need to comment before we end this meeting. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I think there's a very big danger that we're missing. It's not really the tourism impact as much as that guy right there is the problem, Falsy. Because he's one of the, he's one of the best lawyers I've ever seen and I've seen a lot, and I have full confidence that Mr. Falsy-
Do you want him to settle under that?
I have full confidence that Mr. Falsy is going to prevail in the effort to keep the spending cap issue on the ballot because he's good and knows what he's doing. And so that means that April, it's a good chance the spending cap issue is going to be on the ballot, which you talked about the other day, what the consequences of that if it passes are. And I think if you place this on the ballot with it, with the fact that no matter what you say, every member of the assembly should absolutely know that we are not increasing public, public safety spending at all with this. That money goes into the public, can go directly into the public, the police department's fund. It doesn't necessarily increase public safety funding because it depends on what we do with the rest of the budget. And there's no cap on that, how much we're going to put in. So it does, all it does is increase the total amount that the city has to operate with above the tax cap. And that's a fine goal, but people are going to, people aren't stupid, they're going to see that and they're going to see that at the same time they're seeing the spending cap thing. And I think you must just pick them up at their houses and drive them to the polls if you put both of these on there. And I think it's a big danger and you just need to be very careful. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, anything, sir?
That wasn't my question, but I agree with that. So I see a dollar sign. So if we increase it by 2%, we're going to really hurt the amount of money spent in Alaska tourism. So if we decrease the tax by 2%, would it increase anything?
It would decrease the cost of business.
But if we dropped it 2%, we're going to get a-
My view is if you decrease the cost of us doing business, whatever the mechanism is, utilities or property taxes, you help us keep our costs under control, it's positive that you're part of that.
Will more people stay in Anchorage for 2% cheaper tax?
But 2% going to make a difference?
They might, but they also, I'm sorry, but they might stay longer in Anchorage, but what they would do is, is go spend money in all those restaurants. They'd go to all those little mom and pop shops. You know, working at the cook in the summertime or seeing it in the summertime, what you see is everybody walking out of the hotel, because we send them out and we send them right down on Fort Avenue because that's the best place is to go to get everything they want to remember Alaska by, okay? And you come back, you, everybody's got a Tucker Jackson bag, everybody does. And, you know, and it's a yellow bag. If you decrease it, yeah, of course, I think they spend more money here. I think they spend more money all up and down everywhere and even in our own restaurants and hotels. But, you know, I mean, I think that Ralph is right, just help us control the costs and let's figure out a way to give, get money back over for advertising and without the bed tax and let's help the police department at the same time. But how do you do that? Not with bed tax.
Peterson, anything, sir?
Thanks.
Is there a Dunbar, anything, sir?
Yeah, I think it's true.
Mr. Steele?
Yeah.
Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One last comment, I'll take eight votes to send this to the public, but I know I take 5% less one vote. I like the self-tax, to take 6%. So, this means, thanks for being here.